Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Kathy, how are you?
Good.
Representative Dylan, how are you?
I'm great, I'm looking to see who else is here, I think there's some people who are new to the process. So, um, but we're starting with the medical examiner. Mostly so they don't think we forgot about them, given what happened in the past, but there wasn't anything that happened, I think, unless some subcommittee members have questions. And, good morning Senator, how are you? Martha? Good morning Martha, I don't know if you heard me.
Oh, sorry, my mic was off, I said hi. But you just didn't hear me say hi. They all have worked out by now, but we don't.
Okay, and we'll wait maybe another minute before we get started. Now, some people are new to this subcommittee, and I don't know if you're new to the subcommittee process. So, I just want to explain what we're going to do, we're we're following up on the, on the presentation that was given by the department. And, the departments are going to be bringing answers to the questions that were raised. And, uh, just, we're starting with a department that actually did not have any questions raised, but had trouble in the past, and we want to make sure that they know we're following them, so the order today will be, um, the, uh, the medical examiner, and then health strategy, and then Demus.
Alright, good morning everyone, good morning.
Did see the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner here.
Is the department here?
I see they're Zoom. But I don't hear them, can anybody else hear them?
No. Um, Rep Dylan, can I just ask, and then when will we do the, and then what's the order after these three?
That's it for today, and then Friday you meet again with DPH and DDS.
Okay. I didn't know that, but that's okay.
So we're just doing medical examiner today?
Well, veterans have its own territory now. Although, there are some issues that affect veterans, but but that's a separate subcommittee mostly.
Yeah, yeah, I know that, Taylor, we're just doing medical examiner.
We're doing medical examiner, we're doing Office of Health Strategy, and we're doing Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services.
Yes ma'am. And, and who is here from the department?
I see a conference room. But I'm not sure if we can hear them. Let's try it again. I can't hear them, can anybody else?
Can you hear us?
Now we can.
Okay.
Uh, there you are, good morning.
Morning, sorry about that.
I, I wonder, um, uh, we asked you to come so that you'd know that we still working, the work that you do is important to us. And also to see if the subcommittee members who have not worked with medical examiner's office before might have any questions that didn't come up before. Do you have anything that you'd like us to know about what's going on in your department?
Uh, just, yeah, I'll introduce myself, I'm James Gill, the Chief Medical Examiner, I'm here with Dr. Joseph, the Deputy Chief, and Wayne Gordon, our Chief Administrator. Uh, and, yeah, we're here to answer whatever questions, right, our, our main issue really is our, our facility. But that's, I think, another, for another day.
So that, we spent many years concerned about your staffing. Um, can you assure us that you're in a, in a, in a good space on staffing?
Uh, yes, I think we are in a very good space, we're completely full with our medical examiners. Uh, and we're bringing on new investigator staff that we had some vacancies. Uh, so we are making very good progress with our staffing, yes.
Uh, do, do any subcommittee members have questions about the Office of Medical Examiner? Senator Marks?
Yeah, I just have, um, you know, when we had the budget presentation, the speaker, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, I apologize. She did talk about the facility, and that they don't have enough rooms to do the work in, and how, how is that impacting our constituents? I mean, I just can't imagine if you're waiting for the autopsy of a loved one, and it's taking much longer than expected because of, um, lack of open rooms. So can you just, you, you kind of mentioned it in your first little narrative, can you go a little bit deeper into that? And if there was something we could do to help with that?
Sure, there are two areas in the facility that are problematic, one is the autopsy space, we just don't have enough tables to do the volume that we're doing, you know, we've doubled the number of autopsies for, in the past 10 years. The other is storage of the remains, a refrigerated storage, uh, we don't have enough storage, we should have double the amount of storage that we have for our population. Uh, that's required us to actually put a refrigerated tractor trailer in our parking lot. Uh, and that's where we have to store some remains. Uh, because we don't have enough space in the building. Uh, and so those are the two major facility issues, and we've been working now for a few years, trying to, uh, either increase the size of the office, or actually, it looks like what we really need is a new facility um, uh, in order to accommodate our, our increased work.
Would that be, um, oh, I'm sorry, Martha, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, is that, this is something we should probably look to bonding for, I would think, if you want big facility changes, right, have you guys had conversations with finance, revenue, and bonding?
Yes, we have.
Something like this as a package?
Yep, we had an initial plan, uh, for $28 million to expand and do a renovation of the building. Uh, when they had a outside architect come in and look at our workflow and our work product, uh, they felt that it was really more, actually even more cost effective uh, to do a new building, uh, our current building is in terrible disrepair. Uh, and so, uh, we need additional funds, uh, for that new facility, and again, kind of a place to put it, which we hope would be on the Yukon Health Center campus. And we're working with OPM right now to try and come up with that solution.
Okay, that's where I would think it would land, like, it's gonna have to go through, this is a major project, so it's gonna have to go through bonding, it isn't something we'd be able to put into the, and we wouldn't put it into the regular budget.
Correct.
No, I appreciate that, I just didn't know if there was Band-Aid fixes, something we could do now over the next few years that would, um, you know, facilitate it, I don't, how, how long are the residents waiting? Because of the lack of space, how long are they waiting to have the results of their loved one's autopsy?
Uh, you know, it varies on, on the timing, because we don't always have, you know, a steady stream of, of examination, so we, we are meeting almost a 90% of reports done within 60 days, which is kind of uh, kind of the national standard. We certainly finished 90% in 90 days. Um, but it's a matter of getting to get the autopsy done, uh, so the body can be released to the funeral home, so they can actually go on with their arrangements. Uh, and so, sometimes on weekends, for example, today, you know, we have almost 100 bodies uh, in, in the office, we should have a limit of about 80. Um, so, you know, we, we need to, we're, we're stopping bringing in bodies from, from hospitals until we can get funeral homes to come in and remove some of the, the remains that we've already examined.
Martha, is that?
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Kathy? I see your hand up.
Thank you Madam Chair. Um, so, um, if you could just clarify, so we, we recognize, and you talked about it during your presentation about the need to expand, and we certainly understand that. But realistically, that's probably not for a few years down the road, so, until we get to that place, how is the lack of space and the constraints that you're under impacting, you touched on it just a little bit before, but will you continue to run behind schedule? And my second question is, are you at full staff currently? And I apologize if you answered that before.
Yeah, we're, we're full staff for, uh, medical examiners and our investigators, we're still have some, some lab assistant uh, work, we need, uh, space we need to get. Um, you know, the, the facility issue does affect our efficiency. Uh, and so it does slow things down, we could be more efficient uh, if we had more autopsy tables, for example, and more body storage, now our, our techs have to go out into the parking lot in the winter in the snow to retrieve a body, uh, and a funeral home may have to wait to pick up that body, because we have to do extra steps to get it. Um, the facility is also, is gonna be affecting, has affected our national accreditation. Uh, because they, they do a yearly review of our facility and our, our work. And we're kind of meeting the, a lot of the work guidelines, the forensic guidelines, but we, we're failing in our facility. A lack of space, we have to store, uh, uh, different, uh, materials outside in another cargo uh, hold in the parking lot, we just, we just don't have enough space in this facility. And, and to make a big investment in correcting some of these things when there is a potential new building on the, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of struggle along and, and not have to, not have to pay twice in a way.
Right. I appreciate that, thank you very much, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you, and, and just a thought, in terms of the questions that were asked. When you really got slammed a couple of years ago, some of it was the opioid crisis. And, and, uh, we really we didn't have what we needed, or you didn't have what you needed, but but there was also all of a sudden, a whole lot of young people, or younger, uh, with, uh, and, that needed to be checked out. Are you still seeing the opioid crisis as the future of the work that you're doing?
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna have some, some good news about the opioid crisis, and that I've got some preliminary numbers, and they seem to continue, each year they've gone, the numbers have gone down about 5, 7%, and I think we're gonna see a no, a further decrease this year, which is helpful for our work. Um, but you just never know when the next opioid crisis or the next COVID crisis is gonna come along. So we want to be prepared for that as well, even though our intoxication numbers do seem to be coming down, which is, which is great news, I think, for the state.
Thank you, and, and is there another question, I'm not seeing? Lindsay, was there anything else that came up in the presentation that we should be paying attention to?
No, I don't think so, um. I have, I don't know if you have any questions about their, um, the budget sheets, but I have them up on the screen. They only have three current services write-ups, but, um, I think three. But if you have any questions about those, but other than that, no, I think, I think that's basically it.
Well, I, I was concerned that COVID theoretically has dropped, but I'm still concerned about the opioid. Uh, and so, um, if you have good news, that would be, that would be wonderful. Um, uh, so, um, are there other questions? Well, I hope you're talking to the finance and bonding people about your facility. It's, uh, we don't, we don't, we're not involved in that, but thank you for your work.
Alright, thank you very much, have a good day.
We have a few minutes until um, the Office of Health Strategy.
Hey Pat?
Yes.
This is Kathy.
Hi Cap.
How are you?
Good morning.
Uh, hey, listen, I, I'm at a doctor's appointment, so I'm in and out, but, um, I have some sheets for you on the crumbling foundation, for you to better understand that process there, and show you how much work has been done, I have them in my office from the latest annual report that we had on it. Um, so I wanted to get them to you, so I just wanted to, can, when are you gonna be up at the LOB? I'm not up there today, well, I'll be up there later on today, but not, right?
Maybe tomorrow, but definitely Wednesday, I, I was really saying that for the public, there's some person who believes that all the money that went to the crumbling foundation went to my district. And that really hasn't, they're two separate issues. But I keep getting hostile email about it, so to be honest, I said that out loud.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt the conversation, I just want to remind everybody that we are live on YouTube.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Not bad, not a bad thing, I just want to make sure that, that you get that information, so you have all of the because it's, it's a, it's, it's a finite issue, because we talked about it at our last meeting, that it's gonna be, um, done in 2030, which is really not that long away in the grand scheme of things. So I want to make sure that you get this information, so you have it, so you can share it with your particular constituent.
I think that, that's really generous of you, because, uh, they're two separate issues, and it's very helpful if I can share that information, so people don't think that you know, hundreds of millions of dollars have been pouring into my district, which is which is what, when somebody posted on some message board that I don't follow, uh, so thank you very much for that offer, and if you can share that with Dawn, maybe. Um, we'll have it in the office, and we can share it with anybody who writes to me about it.
Okay, great.
That's very, very helpful, thank you.
Thanks.
So we have 10 minutes, unless uh, unless the Office of Health Strategy is here. Um, I don't, I have the Demus response, I don't think I have the OHS re- report back, do we?
Yes, we have, we have the responses, I was just going to ask, um, Taylor, or, I'm not, I'm not even sure, are, do you want me to share their answers, are we going to have OHS control the screen, um, I don't even remember how we did it last year.
Well, we usually have the agency make a presentation in response.
Okay.
But, um.
Do you want me to forward you with the, uh, their material, Rep Dylan?
Well, yeah, I think it would be helpful if the subcommittee can see that, there's a lot of new asks in there.
Okay.
And there were questions. And ironically, and most of the testimony was not about that department. Uh, I don't recall, uh, so um, testimony about that department in, in the, in the public section. So, uh, I think it might be helpful, um, for people who are new to that department.
Well, these are the resp- I, I just shared the responses, um, that they were, from the questions they were asked. And then they do have some supplemental uh, two Excel files that they shared as well. Susan sent out, um, this on February 28th. Um, so, they'll probably end up sharing that as well, but.
Well, if, um, folks on the, on the subcommittee haven't had a chance to read it, well, we, we can just give you a chance to read that before we start. They won't be here for another 10 minutes, so.
Lindsay, do you want me to do that?
If you, yeah, if you want to, to share your screen?
Um, I don't have it up right now, but I can pull it up, if you just wanna scroll through, that would be great, since yours is already up.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah, I, I passed along a list of questions that I thought were left unanswered, following the, the budget presentation here, so they, they provided answers, uh, to all the questions, I'm not sure how uh, in-depth some of those answers were. But they have some attachments here. Uh, this was incredibly helpful for me, the breakdown of the, uh, two major pieces of legislation where they're asking for a lot of positions. Uh, the, out of network capping those prices, there were was that five positions, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
And they have this breakdown here of what those positions will be, what their duties will be. So, one policy development coordinator, one economist, two insurance actuaries, and one staff attorney, three. We have the duties for notice material change positions, as three attorneys. With a long list of duties, and two lead planning analysts. They've, uh, gotta attach their other expenses. And then this last question, uh, they, they didn't really provide an in-depth answer, they kind of passed the buck on to OPM when it comes to the hospital provider tax. So these were the questions that I thought were left unanswered, if any of you had any more that you had written down, obviously, great to ask through it, but we'll probably have them go through this again.
Okay. Um, and, uh, why don't we, why don't we just, uh, have them go through that document, and Jacob, you can take the lead then. Um, and I appreciate your, your bringing all that up, uh, uh, bringing up your assessment, um. I don't know, the provider tax, there have been some questions raised on the federal level too, so I don't know. I'm very uncertain about what's going on there, so. Um, but, that's great. Now, if anybody on the subcommittee has questions you want to add to that, we could do that uh, now, since we have seven minutes. Or you could just, uh, oh, we've got more people, look at this, Neil here. This is great. And and, uh, or we can take them up during the presentation.
I do have OHS in the waiting room, it's up to you if you want to use the seven minutes, or let them in a little early.
Um, I, my preference would be to let them in a little early, because there's a lot of new stuff here.
Yep.
That is.
You got it.
Martha, what do you think?
Senator Marks?
I agree.
Okay.
The OHS conference room is here.
Yeah, there's people, people are flooding in, so. It's a, it's a good it's, uh, it seems to be drawing more interest than the medical examiner. Good morning.
They haven't connected to audio yet, I see, it's
I see, I see that, I see that. Now.
We might have lost them. Oh, here we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, why don't, why don't you, uh, respond to some of the questions that you provided us with some materials? And, uh, and, uh, Jacob can, uh, can assist us in that, he's our person with OHS.
Sure, would you, would you mind if we just waited, we, we were scheduled for 10:30, we have two more team members that are joining, let me just text them and let them know we're starting a little bit early?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's only four minutes.
Alright, so, uh, the, the rest of the team is gonna join, I'm, I'm with Cindy Dubu Gallo here in the conference room, and um, Boy Jackson and Sumit Sajnani are going to join remotely. Um, so we, we had sent you, um, a document that um, responded to eight questions. And then, I believe we sent you three additional spreadsheets that um, outlines further detail in response outlines further detail in response to some of your questions. So, um, we're happy to clarify anything or provide additional information, or I can run through the questions one through eight very quickly. You let us know what would be most helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Jacob, uh, do you wanna go through some of the, with some of the responses?
Um, I think the, the agency would be better equipped to kinda go through and explain what they have here. We're happy to scroll through the document and lead it, but I, I think they're, they're in a better spot to answer your questions.
Okay. Um, your first question was, uh, about transitioning expenses from the insurance fund to the general fund. And, um, as we said in our response, we support the governor's budget as proposed. Um, we understand there's interest in further exploration about, um, the insurance fund, but, um, tho- those negotiations typically would happen as the budget process proceeds, so we, we don't offer any suggestions here. Question two, can we provide a full breakdown of insurance fund expenditures? Um, we have, um, on this document, a high-level summary of the insurance fund expenditures. So, uh, and then in the spreadsheets that we send, there's, um, a lot more extensive detail about how this is broken down. Um, you can see that PS and fringe, you know, um, from the insurance fund, the friend, the fringe is charged directly to the agency, whereas, um, uh, the fringe is located elsewhere for the general fund, personal services. So, um, about four million dollars goes to PS and fringe. And then, uh, the remainder is in OE. And then we'd further break down, um, the OE on, um, the spreadsheet, the other spreadsheets that we sent you. So if you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to, um, share. We, uh, sent you a spreadsheet that shows the federal revenue that's generated on some of those expenses. Um, the largest chunk of OE goes to the State Health Information Exchange, Connie. That money comes to OHS and then is, uh, contracted with the HIE entity as per statute. So that's, uh, net about five and a half million dollars in twenty twenty-five. Um, and the remainder is, as you can see, for a variety of other, um, services and, uh, contracts.
Uh, does anybody on the, on the, have any questions about the first two responses? I'm sure that the issue of the insurance fund will come back for discussing. Uh, but, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Proceed.
Um, you asked for an organizational chart, uh, which we provided.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you asked for a list of, uh, contractors and outside consulting, which we provided.
Any questions about the outside consulting? Hmm, okay.
Okay, um, you asked for a position.
I had one quick question. I'm sorry. I just couldn't meet myself quick enough. Do we have, and I don't have it right in front of me here. Do we have the total cost of the outside consultants listed?
Yes.
Okay, is that the number right there in front of me on this screen? Sorry, four meetings at the same time, so I apologize.
Yeah, I'm with you, Heather. I think there was a separate document. Does anybody have that separate document? I'll share it. Hold on one second.
Yes, I believe that number is, is that the eleven and a half million?
If you go to the document that's titled Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five, I F O E funds, contracts, and contractors. Yep, that one. Okay, and if you look at the second column, you can see the amount that's allocated from the insurance fund.
The nine million number, right?
Yeah.
It's actually eight million point one with the federal match.
Thank you, so.
Is that without Connie, though? Is that what the?
Without Connie, it's a three point five. Highlighted row, right, representative? Three point five million without Connie. With Connie, net of the federal reimbursement, it's, um, total of eight point one.
Or is it six?
No, I just wanna make sure that I'm reading this correctly, so, um, with federal funds to the state, okay, so in total with Connie, we're spending eight point one six six million on outside consultants.
Including Connie.
Right, and then without Connie, we're at three and a half million.
Correct.
Okay, do you, and do you have the breakdown of what these consultants are someplace? And if you have given it to us, I apologize.
It's right there on the screen, Senator.
Right, this built Cedar Bridge, this one?
The scope of work and duties.
Got it.
Yeah, that's it.
I just wanted to make sure that was what we were talking about in front of me here. Um, wow, it's a lot of money.
So can we get a little more breakdown? Like, if you're looking at just the all-payer claims database, we're spending, what, one point two million on consultant services for that, what does your staff do? For the all-payer claim data. You should have to answer that now, but, um, you know, if we're paying one point two million dollars in consultants also, so what, how, how does the staff break down around all-payer clater, uh, claim pa- database in conjunction with the consultants? I would say the same thing for.
I would like to see the same thing for like the P B, I, like for everything, for the P B S, for all of it, actually.
Yeah.
Can you say a little bit more what you mean?
Well, I think that the responses here are a good start. Uh, but I think, I think there are going to be some more questions about, you know, five hundred thousand dollars for report writing sort of stuff, it's, uh, given the pressure, uh, that we'll be on, under, uh, on the budget, I think we're gonna be getting a lot of questions about that.
If I get that, I, I think a breakdown is necessary because me, layperson, just looking at this, I feel I'm questioning whether there could be overlap. Yeah, that, a breakdown would certainly be very helpful, cuz I look at that and two million dollars for two different. I would need that breakdown too, and I understand what they're saying, so that would be really helpful.
Well, that's helpful. You're, you're asking whether or not there's actually duplication in some of this, uh, consultant work.
Is that it? Uh, yeah, I am concerned about that, yes.
Duplication with what, uh, I, I, and so that we can be responsive. Um, I, I would ask a little bit more, what do you mean by further breakdown of what's described here in the scope of work?
I think we'll segue now with the previous speakers, uh, Senator Summers and Representative Mutia. We just need more of, a breakdown of each of these. We have On Point, APCD, and Covetous are doing slightly different work, it appears by what you've put as your scope of work. But if you could give us the full details of both of that, and then we have the Health, Health Information Exchange, one, two, three different. I, I just wanna break down of it. I think that's what the other speakers were asking for, and I've just pointed you, that's what I'm looking at and wondering what those are. Makes sense?
Well, it, it.
Questions and comments.
But we've broken it down by contracts, so when you say breakdown, i- it can be broken down further. Is, are you asking for further detail about what each contract is for? We've given the statutory.
But you know what? I, I believe, and, and my apologies, I think this is my first time seeing this. I don't recall getting this email, and if I did, I apologize, I overlapped it, so I'm just looking at it for the first time, and I'm just questioning as, uh, Senator Summers said, you know, we're paying almost one point two million dollars for all-payer claims database, so that, that's just, I'm just echoing what Senator Summers had said that just looking at this, just questioning what that would be, so.
Okay, so, right now, we have a question that was originally posed by Senator Summers. And then Representative Mutia, it sort of amplified that, and then, and now, uh, Representative Kennedy, is there any overlap in all of your questions, or are you all satisfied that we're that they've been recorded, although not necessarily resolved?
And if I could, Rep Dylan, I see that, uh, Mr. Sanjani, uh, from OHS has his hand, well, not anymore. He had his hand raised.
Oh, no, but thing, I, I've just heard On Point a couple times, and maybe this comment is helpful. I think what we tried to do in this spreadsheet is provide you a comprehensive list of all contracts we have, even though the terminology used, um, a week ago in the appropriations meeting was consulting. I just think for the committee members, it's gonna be important to make a distinction between traditional consulting versus operational contracts. So when you're looking at On Point or All-Payer Claims Database, they are the substantive entity that is doing the data collection from the carriers for the On Point, uh, operationalizing the system. Uh, and that is different from, for example, a consulting service where there's non-operational services being provided. So, A, I can tell you that the way these contracts are broken down, there isn't overlap in terms of services, plus the contracts substantially, the majority of the funding really is around operations. The same thing with the HIA contract. Uh, the operating entity of the Health Information Exchange is HIA, and they're the ones who are paid to collect and connect all of the providers. So just wanted to make that clear distinction between how you might be using the word consultants versus how we've provided a comprehensive list of contracts.
Thank you, and I suspect that we'll be circling back, but the layperson looking at this, looking at two different entries for data analysis, or several entries for report writing, might, might well ask uh, what we're paying for and, and, and whether or not, you know, so that it's, and I think it's not unreasonable for us to try to have a, a more detailed explanation of, let's say, why you have different diverse smaller tasks that's identified on this document.
Yeah, I would go so far as to say, Rep Dylan too, you know, it's, your consulting is half of your budget. So, and we've got, what, forty, almost fifty employees, so I'd like to understand how it overlaps with the existing employees also.
We are, we are happy to, um, provide a detail on these contracts and the statutory links to each of them. I'd also be happy to, um, provide comparisons to other states and how they fund these functions in their government and what it costs in other states and the number of staff. Um, because I think you will find that, um, Connecticut spends relatively small amount on the very broad set of functions that have been statutorily assigned to OHS. Um, many, many states have a separate entity for the data analysis, a separate entity for, uh, the oversight of certificate of need and health systems planning, a separate entity for health information technology, um, and a separate entity for, um, healthcare innovation and policy development. Those are all within, uh, one agency in Connecticut, um, with a relatively modest budget, so um, I think it's important to keep the, the relative size of OHS, um, in mind. And further, that each one of these tasks has been something assigned through statute to the Office of Health Strategy. Um, so we, we are carrying out work that we, uh, have been directed to carry out through law. And, um, these are the resources that, um, have been needed. We're, we're happy to explain. But it, it's not that, um, OHS has come up with a bunch of ideas and, uh, used the, the, of funds for that purpose.
Um, I would ask that, when you do that, you make sure you're looking at sizes of comparable, uh, states of comparable size, you know, like, uh, Oregon will look very different than Texas or something, and also I had a conversation with somebody, um, this weekend regarding the H IE information, and that there are other platforms out there that are less expensive than what we're doing, um, that have higher connectivity, so I don't know if that's something to kind of look at also.
Jacob, I assume that you're recording all of this. I, um, I don't think, Commissioners, anybody's accusing anybody of anything. They're, we're just trying to understand the document that's in front of us.
Yes, Rep Dylan, I'm syn- I'm, I'm synthesizing your questions.
Okay, uh, Pat, this is Tony. Can I just say, I think the, um, that a lot of us are still just learning what OHS really does.
I understand, Rep Walker, yeah.
And so that's why there's a lot of the, these questions. The one thing you said, you gave us an organizational chart.
Yeah. And, and we'd be happy to, um, spend as much time as you'd like walking through. Um, I'm sorry, you're under the weather, Rep Walker.
Yes.
It seems to be going around. But we'd be happy to spend as much time as you'd like, uh, walking through the org chart and, you know, the functions that OHS, you know, uh, has been given by, by the legislature. We, we have no problem spending as much time as you'd like doing that.
Good, I think it, it'll help you for us to understand it better, and it's just because it, it kept growing, and we didn't understand the scope of what you were doing, so.
Understood.
That's really critical for us right now, especially when we are short with money, so we have to make sure what we're doing is right in the, in the lines of what we need to do immediately. Thank you.
Also, Cindy, I don't think that we received the organizational chart, um, in the email you passed along. We have the IE, we have the OE contracts. We have all the OE, and we have the list of responses, but I don't think we actually received the org chart, if you could pass that along to me.
Yes, I'll make sure that gets over to you.
Thank you.
Sorry about.
I mean, I guess from my part anyway, um, uh, Tammy's point about the percentage of the budget, which is consultants, it may be justifiable at some point, but you always wonder how much information is gonna be retained institutionally if, if it's a consultant doing it, and that is a large number, so that may not be, I, I, that, it's just a question I would have.
Um, uh, respectfully, uh, the vast majority of the OE is for the operation of the Health Information Exchange, and to your point, Rep Mutio, um, you know, we, we'd be happy to talk about how that model was designed and whether there are ways to, um, be more efficient. Uh, that's a, as you know, a, a separate nonprofit organization. It's not operated by OHS. Um, but respectfully, the three and a half million dollars in outside contracts, um, uh, is not a large number compared to, uh, the amount of work that's generated and produced. So I, I'm not exactly sure why the focus on such a relatively small part of the budget, but, uh, three and a half mil- billion dollars for the vast array of, um, work that's produced out of OHS, I think is, is a modest amount.
Well, I, I guess from my part, I would say we're dealing with a new situation now with budget and with what's happening in Congress, so I'm looking at everything. It, it's not about, it's not about you.
Understood.
And I would also add to what Rep Dylan said, you know, if everybody here is collectively asking what do those consultants do, they don't know the value of that work. They don't know what they're doing. They don't know how that ties into your fifty-something staff and, and everything else, so it's our job to question.
Well, understood.
Okay, next question or next response?
Um, so there are some, uh, positions in the governor's proposed budget. So there are some positions in the governor's proposed budget for out-of-network capping. And you had asked for a breakdown. So we respond there to what those positions would be doing. And similarly, there are, I think, three positions, two or three for Notice of Material Change, Governor's Bill, which would add some new responsibilities to the Office of Health Strategy. So we detail those and as much detail as we can.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can I ask, what is network capping?
Out-of-network cap, that's a, one of the governor's proposed bills, Rep. Walker, that would limit the amount that could be charged when a person seeks care outside of their insurance network. Right now, as you know, that can be a very large, much larger amount than they would have paid if the care had been provided in-network. And so one of the governor's bills to lower the cost of care altogether, to save people money, would be to limit what could be charged for out-of-network services.
Okay, I, I think I got it, but if you could just expand on that a little bit. It doesn't have to be more than a couple of sentences, but I just need, need a little bit more meat and understanding what that is. Thank you.
Tony, I can walk you through it too.
Okay, thanks.
So we have the detail on the positions for the Notice of Material Change and the Out-of-Network Cap. Then question six is, can you provide a breakdown of our other expenses? That is on the spreadsheet titled IFOE appropriated for fiscal year twenty-five. I don't know if you want to bring that up or if you want to just look at that offline.
Hold on, I'll bring it up just for a second. I have it here. Zoom out a little bit. I don't want to zoom out too much, make it too small to read.
So you can see here that the, the Health Information Exchange is more than half of the Insurance Fund OE. And then the remainder is spread across our remaining statutorily described activities. The APCD, as you saw, that is a, a contract with an outside entity as virtually every state, every other state that operates an all pair claims database uses an outside entity. There's millions of claims in that database. And so that's operated by, in, in this case, On Point. The Cost Growth Benchmark, I think you're all familiar with. And then our Health Equity Activities and our statewide healthcare facilities and services plan and our inventory of healthcare facilities and services make up the remainder, a small percentage of the OE.
Are there any questions about that? Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. We think we did send Jacob the org chart, so I don't know. Oh, we just sent it now. So if you, I don't know, Representative Dylan, if you wanted to look at the org chart now or, or look at it at your leisure after the, after the session is over.
Okay. We did have a lot of questions from outside the subcommittee, from our members about, about what the department does and so forth. You know, people are very vigilant now. They're worried about Medicaid cuts in Washington. So they're looking at everything and it's our duty to do the same anyway. So we'll take a look at that. Are there any further questions from the members? Or we can move to the next question?
Okay, question seven asked about the future funding source for our Senior Director for Health Equity. That would be the Insurance Fund. That's our main source of all of our staffing as per how the budget has been proposed and managed in the past. There are some federal funds currently, but the future funding would be through the Insurance Fund. And then the last question had to do with the hospital provider tax. There was some question about the implications of the hospital provider tax, any potential federal changes in those rules and regulations that come out of CMS. Our response here is, first of all, it wouldn't have direct implications for the Office of Health Strategy. Obviously, there would be indirect implications for the state budget overall. But since the Department of Social Services has the State Plan Amendment, the relationship with CMS and administers the, and collects the, well, administers the program, we would respectfully request that that question is better directed to, to DSS and OPM.
So Commissioner, jumping back to, jumping to number seven, the assumption in the budget is that is that the, that the Director of Health Equity will be funded partially by the federal government?
Yes, through a, through a cooperative agreement that we had with CMS.
I see. And were there any questions from the members? Martha, are you still with us?
Pat, I, I'll ask, why, why are you?
Don't worry. I'll ask a question if I need to. You don't have to worry about me.
Okay. Commissioner, why are we doing partial state and partial federal? When you know, when you know that the word equity is, is, is a, is a red flag. So that would mean that this agency would end up not working with a full budget because of that.
I would move on to what Tony is asking. What other positions do we have that are funded that way? Because I didn't know we had any federally funded.
This is the Ahead Model Cooperative Agreement. And we have, in, in the states, the first year of funding for that program. So through, I don't want to say the date. It's either through fiscal twenty-five or through fiscal twenty-six. And we've had no indications representative of any change in that program from CMS. We, we've not been told that any funds will be either clawed back or that we can't expect to get the funds in the future. All of the states that are working on the head models are proceeding with doing the work. We understand that the individual who has been nominated to run the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Innovation has spoken favorably about the type of model that's proposed in ahead. And so we, because we have the funding, because we've been given no direction otherwise, we are proceeding to do the work of Ahead.
But on, on, so on this, this specific, last year, when we had the, I guess, the Office of Health Equity, was it paid for through the Journal Fund?
Office of Health Equity. You're talking about this position, Representative, our Senior Director of Health Equity? It was paid through the, in this fiscal year, it was paid through the Insurance Fund.
Ah, okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, I don't, we don't need to get into an extended discussion, but I did get an email from one of the organizations I belong to that identified some trigger words that could disqualify your grant proposals. And one of them was equity and one of them was women. And I think the other one was climate. So it may have been just that particular agency, but I, I just think we should be cautious about our assumptions if, if there's a policy shift. And, and I appreciate the position that you're in and that we're, we're in a position to. Thank you. Thank you, Representative Walker, for mentioning that. Okay. Are there any other questions from the committee? Kathy, did you have a question that I overlooked?
No, I'm all set. I, I kind of actually have a dumb question. It's going to sound dumb. The title says Senior Director of Health Equity. So are, are there other health equity positions? Because usually when there's a senior and then there's a, someone below it and someone below it, or is it, that just happens to be the title, senior? I, I know, I'm silly, but that means there's multiple positions?
No.
I don't understand that.
There's no one else with that title at the agency.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. So there's no junior?
There it's not.
Okay. Are there other questions? Well, thank you very much. And thank you for sending the organizational chart. I didn't take a look at it during the, since it arrived during our discussion, but that'll be helpful.
Apologies for that. So you let us know how you would like to proceed in, in terms of a meeting to talk about the functions of the Office of Health Strategy writ large. I know it's a very busy time. I don't know if anybody has an extra hour to carve out, but whatever you'd like in terms of whatever other information we can provide about the functions that have been given to OHS through, through statute over the past five years of its existence. We're happy to do that.
That, that's great. And then, and then it's really our duty to not only apply our own judgment, but to, to be responsive to the questions that have been raised by our own members. And, and they're, they're asking about everything, not just yours. So, so we'll, OHS is here and they're on it and we'll, we'll circle back at some point. I don't know if there is an hour that we all have free at the same time.
I would, I would be surprised, but we're happy to make the offer if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we're, is Demus here?
I'm letting them all in.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for your response to our questions.
Sure.
And I wonder if you could just proceed with, is Emily here?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, great. And if we could share the screen and go through the responses.
Sure.
Be helpful. And if you weren't here at the beginning to the newer members were simply respond, were, this is the department responding to questions that were raised during their presentation.
I am prepared to share on behalf of Demus. I just would need the permissions to do so.
You, you can share without it.
I can, okay.
Should be able to, in theory.
Got it.
So by way of introduction, I'm Nancy Navarrete, Commissioner of Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. I have with me my CFO, Cheryl Aurora, and my legislative team, Kelly Cinco-Stuber and Chandra Persad. Okay, do you want me to jump right in, Rep. Dylan?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Number one reflects a lot of the testimony that we ended up getting that day, so.
Okay. So just for context, this question is about the, the proposed reductions to the Prevention Services at Demus. The overall budget for prevention is twenty-two point four million dollars. You'll see that in the cell all the way to the right at the bottom of the table. The proposed reduction would affect the rows in yellow. Those are the two SIDS, the SA grants and the mental health grants. And the types of programs funded in those two SIDS include things like increasing employment opportunities for individuals in recovery, the assessment, planning and provision of the behavioral health needs of children, adolescents and adults across all five regions, including funding of the regional behavioral health action organizations, the Governor's Prevention Partnership, and our work to decrease tobacco and other drug use in youth, youth and adults. And as well as our statewide library and resource center that provides information on substance use and mental health, prevention, recovery and treatment. This is a repository essentially of curricula, interventions for educators, students, families and organizations, as well as retailers and communities to mitigate the impact of substance use. So all of that is the yellow. That adds up on the bottom to about a million dollars. The reduction would be five hundred in each. And you see that, that doesn't quite work out, so we'd have to figure that out. So other things may be affected there. The green column, Personnel Services, is where our state staff is paid out of. The five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars represents five staff. They manage statewide primary prevention, including suicide prevention and postvention, and coordinating activities for all of our contracted programs, which I think at this point is about a hundred different contracts. They organize the Annual Connecticut Prevention Summit, the National Prevention Week. And that, like I said, is five primary prevention FTEs. The three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars represents four FTEs to ensure compliance with the SINAR Amendment, which reduces, aims to reduce youth access to tobacco products. And that is not an optional program that funds for staff. And as part of us receiving federal SUD, Substance Use Block Grant Funds, we need to also be compliant with the state laws around enforcement of tobacco laws in Connecticut. So that is that cell. The other green cells represent our federal funding, the one seventy-three and the one point three million. That is six, represents six federal staff. And the four hundred and forty-four thousand represents three cannabis. And the 444,000 represents three cannabis-related staff. So any questions related to the funding streams and what possibly might be affected? You have all the narrative on page three of your packet, but I just gave you the highlights of those. Rep. Dillon?
Sorry, Rep. Condalar. I saw Rep. Gilchrist's hand.
Okay, thank you. I'll jump in. Um, uh, two questions. The first with the SINAR Amendment. If we're required to cover that by federal and state law, what happens if those four positions are eliminated?
We could potentially lose, uh, some of our federal funding.
Do you know why that was selected by the governor?
Um, I do not.
Okay, thank you. And then up to, um, B1 in the yellow, the 581. I'm sorry, what? Oh, that was someone else's. Um, is that in the write-up what those, I for some reason can't open my attachments, um, is that in the write-up what those exact agencies are? Like the GPP, RBH, AO, what those, what is that?
Yes, the, the narrative sets on page three. It looks like Rep. Gilchrist is frozen. Oh, you're back.
Sorry. Um, so that's in the narrative. Does this, does in any way is that C car? Because that came up a lot at the, um, hearing or is it completely different?
Completely different. The, at the hearing, they were referring to a federal earmark that they received. That was.
There we go. Thank you.
Could y'all mute, please?
That was $1.5 million that they received in a federal earmark that was one-time funding. It did not come through Demus.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's it for now.
Um, Representative McCrory, Davey, I think you were next, and then Representative, uh, Condalaria? Am I missing somebody? Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, and hello, Commissioner. I unfortunately am going to have to leave early to go co-chair Public Health. So I, I expect to be following up with you on the rest of this 31-page document. Thank you for all the answers that you sent us. My primary questions are right here in this area where we're, we're losing a number of staff who are responsible to 169 communities, every one of which has a local prevention council. And you had a good conversation with Rep. Gilchrist about the tobacco prevention piece. I, and I'm betting that Rep. Condalaria may be talking about cannabis, but I'll talk about, uh, the regional behavioral health action organizations and the Governor's Prevention Council and the regional suicide advisory boards. If we lose those staff people, if these cuts go through, who and how will we be able to cover the necessary work to be able to continue, hopefully with federal funds we hope to continue to get? Obviously, we know those will remain at risk, but, um, to help our local communities do the prevention work that is needing to happen.
So I will kind of answer questions two and three to answer your question. The RBH AOs do receive funding through, um, these funding streams. It's $218,000 from mental health grants and $55,000 from substance use grants. So we would have to work with them with our other funding streams to cover what we could. And then it does represent about 57% of our, this reduction, which is $1.7 million, is about 57% of the state budget. And the seven positions represents 78% of the general funded prevention staff minus the cannabis staff. So it is a significant chunk and we would really have to work with our partners to cover what we could and with our other state partners as well.
And I know this isn't what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that sounds like it would be, there would absolutely be cuts to services and cuts for, in our inability to provide prevention services in any number of areas, whether it be tobacco, opioid, alcohol, cannabis, problem gaming, all kinds of things that our local prevention councils are now doing, um, and work with our young people. So this is a really very concerning cut. It would have a tremendous impact. And I want to thank you for your answers and the information. Thanks, Madam Chair.
And Representative, Madam Chair, Representative, it was Representative Condalaria who fought to get the tobacco prevention dollars in three years ago? I'm losing track of years, but, um, so, in time, but, uh, so he's all over prevention. But thank you very much for your question.
Thank you. Thank you for the tag team, Rep. Condalaria.
Thank you. Um, if I may, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm also very concerned when I see this and the impact that definitely will have. So, uh, Commissioner, it's always good to see you.
Good to see you.
Just trying to get a better understanding on the, uh, the allocation, the 584 and the personnel services. And then we have on the cannabis, $444,000. Can you talk to a little bit about the efforts that are being taken to, uh, within Connecticut to provide prevention with these dollars?
Sure.
We don't have to, we don't have to go into details now, Commissioner, because I know it's a lot and there's others that have questions. But if you can provide, I would like to get a better understanding of how these dollars are being utilized? How much is going for, just to pay for personnel? And if that personnel is also, um, in charge of providing training or prevention services? I'm trying to get a better understanding, because when I look at these numbers, I thought that in the future we were going to be allocating a lot more to prevention. Although this is a great start, but I think it's minimal and it does concern me. And also when I look at, um, the mental health promotion and youth suicide prevention, the $735,000, those are all federal dollars?
735, yes. Yep.
Okay. And what allocation do we have from our own general funds for this particular item? Based on this report, I'm looking at this table, this is the only funding we get.
So if you look at the middle section of this table where it says general funds allocated in blue at the top, all those one, two, three, four columns, SA grants, mental health grants, managed services and personnel services, that's all in our general fund budget. What would potentially be affected by this reduction are the columns in yellow and green? The columns, not the, uh, freestanding cells that are green. The three freestanding cells refer to federal staff and the 444 represents three staff focused completely on the cannabis, messaging, prevention, media buys. So that is not affected by this reduction. The reduction affects the SA grants, mental health grants and the state staff, which is the 584 and the 365.
584 and the 365. Those are the only two impacted. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Simmons, Heather?
Yes, hello, Commissioner. Um, nice to see you. Um, I have a question for the Commissioner that is not one that we asked previously. And I, she can get back to us too, but I'm concerned, we do have some bills going through the system. One in particular has to do with, um, let's see what we call them, um, opiate overdose facilities. And regardless of how we feel about the bill, um, I wanted to know if that bill passes where you're allowing people to, um, you know, bring heroin off the street, so to speak, to be able to inject it in these facilities, what do we pose or what grants are at risk for that? I know you said in the past, like, that we could be jeopardizing federal funding. I'm, you know, this isn't a judgment on the bill. This is just like, what is at risk? I think that's important for all of us to know.
I, I don't think we know that yet. It would depend on the current administration's interpretation and DOJ's interpretation of the federal law, and we haven't seen that play out yet. So.
My concern is that I know two other states, um, have done it, um, and one is in a lawsuit. So I'm, I'm just concerned, do you have any, I know we've said this in the past, because this has been brought up under a different administration and it was the same concern about losing federal dollars. Um, I'm just trying to gauge what our risk is. Like, are we, and I guess you don't, can't answer, is it all of our federal funding? Is it funding for certain programs or, um, I meant all our federal funding as far as what you're, what, what you get? That, that's what I'm trying to, trying to gauge, that's all. And, and you're not able to.
Yeah, I, I can't really predict, you know, what might be tied to that.
And did you have, you had the same problem under, when we passed, we looked at this bill last time when we had a different administration, you also couldn't gauge what the potential risk was. Is that correct?
The only thing I could say about the past administration was that they seemed to be silent on it. And, um, uh, New York ran for quite some time without interference. Rhode Island just opened their doors, I believe, this January.
Right.
They haven't been open very long. Um, so it's yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you. I guess as we get closer, we can round back up and see if there's any more detail. You know, that's just something that's really concerning to me in the climate that we're in. So thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Is that, is that, okay. Are there other questions about this section?
Uh, yeah, Pat, this is Tony. Um, good, good morning, uh, good, good morning, Senator. I mean.
Oh, no.
Yeah, sorry. Um, I'm, I'm looking at, at the, the, the substance abuse grants, the mental health grants, and that's basically, uh, about a million dollars. And then I look at managed services. What is, what, could you just explain quickly what managed service is this? Is that direct services?
Yes. Yeah, so, um, there are a variety of different, um, contractors paid out of managed services. And it's not specifically substance use, not specifically mental health, could be a combination of both, could be co-occurring. Um, and that was, um, uh, the legislature, uh, put those dollars there to really focus on decreasing, uh, adults and youth misuse of substance, all substances, alcohol, tobacco and other drug use.
Okay, and, and when you say managed services, are those things like billboards and, and flyers and things like that? Or, or they direct one-on-one contact types of services?
They're mostly with our private nonprofits and with our, uh, RBH AOs, Regional Behavioral Health Action Organizations, Governor's Prevention Partnership, for example. They do a lot of our prevention work. Wheeler Clinic and the Clearing House does a lot of our prevention work and distribution of materials, to your point about brochures and resources, curricula, all that kind of thing.
The reason why I ask is because, I mean, I remember when we used to have a, a larger, um, um, base of, of grants that went out into the community for, for actual services. And it seems like it's just, it's been really dwindled away. My question is, um, like, when you said you had a reduction in some services earlier, where you, you talked about the dollars, but I, I want to know about the number of services that are impacted by those reductions. It's, it's like when people say, oh, this is 100, 100% of federal poverty level, but we need to know what the actual dollars are of poverty level, poverty level. Excuse me. Um, and, and in order to have a better understanding of what the impact is. So the, the reductions that you talked about, I think it was in the slide before, I'm not sure. But, um, could we just get a little bit more detail on how many people are going to not receive services? And, um, do we have waiting lists in those areas?
So these are more prevention programs. They're not treatment programs. So prevention programs are more, uh, it's more of a public health approach. And so you're distributing materials, providing curricula, working with youth, for example, to become mentors to other youth. So it's not, um, it's not a service reduction. It's more of a reduction to that upstream approach to public health.
To me, that, those are services because, um, they're, they're, if they're, they should be changing the, the impact with the populations that we're serving. So to me, that's a service, but okay, um, I, I hear you in that regard. But then the question I have is where are the dollars that we have for the actual services in the community?
So they are also in these SIDS, across all of these SIDS?
Okay.
But there, we're not, we're not showing those here. This is only prevention. This is a $22.4 million budget for just prevention.
For just prevention, okay. Okay, all right, okay. Um, that's what, okay, I, then I'd like to find out what is the other side of that? The, the direct services to the people, to the kids, to the families. Those are the things that I'm really looking at to see. Do you have a slide for that? I'm sure you do.
Actually, that wasn't one of our questions, but our, our budget is, you know, almost a billion dollars. So that includes both the state-operated services and the contracted services in the community. So if there's a.
Yeah, the reason why I said this is because we get a lot of people, as you know, that come in. And you were, you were gracious. You, you stayed for the testament and I thank you for that. But a lot of them are saying that they don't have access to services. So I don't know where to send them in, in that regard. And prevention is, is key, but we've got a lot of people that have already become, um, uh, a, a user in one, one of the different, um, issues. And so therefore, um, they're past prevention. They are in there and we've got to eliminate that, that addiction of some sort. So where are those? And can, well, better still, just send, can you send us a slide? That would be, so we don't waste our time. Okay. Thank, thank you.
On the managed service system, which I think that kind of confused there. There, there's, we, we still have, I think, uh, the program out of the Institute of Living originally that works with CMHC for early intervention.
We do.
Is that still in the managed service system?
Yes, we still have those dollars. We, in, in fact, the program has expanded.
Uh, that's important. And, and the, um, thank you. And the, uh, the, the family support for military families, the clinical support, had been chopped a bit by a previous administration, but, but I think we added, uh,
Yep.
uh, services for women because we learned that there were, in terms of nationally, in terms of, uh, military support. Um.
That was, that was added back in, um, by you all, uh, a couple of years ago, I believe. And so that still exists. There's about half a million dollars, um, allocated to that program. It's extremely successful and my, um, fellow Commissioner at DVA also speaks highly of the program. So we thank you for those dollars and that program and the focus on women in the last years has also been extremely successful. We in fact hired, I believe, a retired Navy, uh, female, um, who, uh, was the ad as a result of those dollars. So, um, very good program.
That's really good. Now, that was really, I was told that nationally the suicide rate for women returning from theater was higher and that the, they were more likely to be survivors of, of abuse in theater. And that might have been the reason, but I don't know. And, uh, and that the, the program seemed to be tailored towards men with, with substance abuse problems. And that was really, I, you know, and I opened it. I didn't, I just aggregated it. So if that's working well, that would be helpful to know more about it.
Sure.
Because, uh, I did hear complaints from people in other states that some of our services, not Connecticut, but, but that their services were not serving women in the military enough. And, and that, that was, that was a wake-up for me. Yeah. Um, any, any other questions?
So page three is just essentially what I just reviewed for you, with you. But you can refer back to this and it, it literally goes through each section of the table you just viewed to explain what's funded. I answered two and three with the RBH AOs and the presented, percentage that, uh, this reduction would represent. So on to number four. So there was a question about why the fiscal year 25 PS deficiency is not annualized in the proposed budget. And so we start with available funding and our baseline uses fiscal year 25 appropriation as our starting point. So that's $246 million in each year. And then add in the wage settlements each year, so that those are for increases, COLAs to the staff. So that is added in. For this year, fiscal year 25, there was a $7.6 million withhold. So that is in 25, but it does not continue in the biennium. So that's why you see zero in 26 and 27. And then from there, you see all the reductions that appear in the governor's proposed budget. So the transfer of one position back to Department of Aging, the reallocation of IT staff, the attritional reduction, the reduction in prevention staff. And then the reduction in overtime, should we be able to implement Kronos, is $1,026 and $3,027. That gives you your revised funding in each of the years. And then our projected expenditures in each of the years. And in 25, our hires now are starting to hit what we call the post pattern. So that is the core of our hospital staffing pattern. It includes the RNs, the LPNs, the MHA's, the mental health assistants or the FTSs, the forensic treatment specialists. That core staffing has increased dramatically. And so with that, things like double time start to come down. So we've annualized that in 26 and 27 to balance out those years. Any questions on that one? Okay. Someone had asked what is covered under professional services. That's another SID. And these are the types of things that are paid for under those that line item. So any temporary services, so while we are down staff or unable to hire folks like pharmacists, psychiatrists, nurses, doctors, essentially those hard-to-recruit positions, we might use a temp service and that would be covered. Any medical services, since we run two large hospitals. And then we have the smaller units at CMHC, at Capital Region, at Southwest. We're responsible for things like medical care, radiological services, lab testing, ultrasounds, EKG, all of that would be covered in this line. Any special transportation or emergency transportation. And then any consultative services related to our joint commission accreditation, pharmacy or nutrition, for example, would be paid out of here.
Commissioner, on the medical services category of 10 million. No, maybe I'm not. My question, whichever is about whether there's any particular professional or clinical position that that that's an issue in terms of having to reach out to hire temporary services. Historically, there had been a nurses possible.
Yep, during the height of COVID, it was essentially nurses and docs. It's still is that not to the degree that it was in 2021, 22, 23? That is coming down. But we did have difficulty recruiting psychiatrists, nurses, other docs and pharmacists. So, yeah. Okay, next question. Okay, there's a lot of numbers. But you asked for historical staffing levels and overtime expenditures over eight to 10 years as well as our total PS expenditures. And so we did give you that and that's detailed by facility in this chart. But I want to call your attention to the first four lines up top. It's very, I'll just say that it's hard to compare year over year in terms of dollars because dollars also reflects, you know, what folks were paid in 2017 is different from what they're paid in 2025. So all of that is in these numbers and so it it's a little hard to compare year over year. So we summarized in the first four lines overtime hours because then you are truly comparing apples to apples. And what I said in my testimony earlier, if you look at fiscal year 23, Kelly, maybe you could put your cursor over it. And yes, and right above that number is 333,000 hours. That was our high point of double time hours. That's mandated overtime. I think I shared with you fiscal year 23 was our most difficult year. It has since come down. If you see 24, it's all the way down to 165. And then it's trending even, this is not a full year in the far right, the 82, but it is trending down if you project that out through the course of 25. So that, I think, summarizes a lot of what was behind your question. How are you going to achieve overtime savings? And this is an example of what's happening with the numbers. So we're we're really focused on continuing to bring that number down.
Madam Chair, can I ask a couple of questions relative to overtime?
Yes, ma'am.
So you, these facilities are 24/7 facilities. CMHC stands for?
So that the acronyms are spelled out in the in the footnote, but CMHC is the New Haven Facility. Capital Region, CRMHC is the Hartford Facility. CBH, of course, is Middletown. OOC is the Commissioner's Office, which also includes staff in our police, for example. So it includes more than just the administrative staff. They also have overtime. RVS is the outpatient facility in Middletown River Valley Services. SMA is the LMHA in your area.
Yep.
SWKMS is the LMHA in Bridgeport.
Yep.
Western is Danbury, Torrington area and Whiting Forensic Hospital, Middletown, and then the total. And there are all the acronyms down the bottom.
So thank you for that, Commissioner. I'm always hesitant when we start talking about overtime and I think we should pay attention to overtime always. But when we're not taking into account that these are 24/7, by and large, 24/7, other than the outpatient is our 24/7 facilities, are they not?
Not all of them. CMHC has a unit, two units of inpatient. Capital Region has a one unit of inpatient. CBH, of course, is a hospital. Whiting is a hospital. And then down in Bridgeport, we have units down there as well.
And and Whiting is a hospital for a 24/7 and SMA is a 24/7.
SMA, oh, SMA has the the respite, yep.
Yep, so they have that there too. So can you break out the overtime or do you believe that the overtime is broken out on this just by the facility itself because and identified as a 24/7? Because there are people, if somebody calls out sick, you're going to have overtime. If somebody takes a vacation day, you're going to have overtime. Is would that not be accurate?
Right, so if you, Kelly, if you can highlight CBH. So CBH is always going to be the biggest driver of our overtime because of its size. And the first cell in 2017 is the reason it says 1,400 staff there is because that was before the separation of Whiting. And so you really should exclude fiscal year 17, but we we did include it. We have the the data, so we provided it here. But you can see those are very large numbers. Those are dollars. The $30 million, the total PS is large. What you, we thought that a good indicator would be percentage. What percentage of your total spend is on overtime? And you can see that number is going back down from a high of 28% in again fiscal year 23 down to 21%. So again, we're trending in the right direction. But you are correct, CBH is one of the biggest drivers of overtime.
And then relative to Whiting Forensic, how many patients are in Whiting Forensic?
So 229 beds altogether.
And are they filled?
Yes, they're generally filled. There may be, today's census, I don't have off the top of my head. But, you know, we may have five to 10 openings, depending on the day.
And the policies relative to someone being being an inpatient at Whiting Forensic and being released, is that a policy that you set? Or is that a policy that the psychiatric review board sets?
Yeah, it did. It would depend on a handful of things. So there are, it may depend on the criminal justice system and our interaction with the criminal justice system. And it would certainly depend on clinical presentation and the person's recovery.
So again, back to the overtime component of it. You have 28 and 29% in Whiting in the in 23 and 24, trending down to 22, but you're only, you're not quite through the fiscal year yet. So that that surely will go up a bit.
Well, the percentage may stay the same. The raw number may go up, but the percentage may stay the same.
Right. And is most of that relative to people taking time off in one form or another? Whether it's, do you have, do you have a breakout of workers' compensation, sick?
I don't have it with me today, but certainly can provide that. Yes, it includes.
I would like that for both CBH and the and and Whiting Forensic.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on this section? Where are we on page eight of 13?
Page nine at the top. So you had also asked for the Client SERF, that's CMHC, I think, related to to overtime and services. And so we spelled that out for three years. You can see that number is starting to go up because of the increase in folks enrolled now post-COVID in some of the research protocols. But those are the numbers that we serve down in New Haven. Okay, number seven. Regarding staffing reductions through attrition, what responsibilities are related to these positions and how will be impacted? This one is a little bit more flexible than the prevention reduction. It represents only 1.3% of our staff at OOC. It's five positions. And that would be done through attrition and we would evaluate. We actually have a small group of us, three of us, who meet on positions every week or every other week and determine the criticality and whether that should be refilled or not. And we will determine which ones to refill and which ones not to refill based on the scope of responsibilities. On eight, you asked for the 988 cost by funding source, how that was funded and what the total cost for 988 is. The total cost is 6.6 million. The governor's budget proposes 850,000 in each year of the biennium to close the anticipated gap. So again, you can see in this grid, what is at risk is in yellow. Those two grants, we received their federal grants through SAMSA. We hope that they will be continued in 27. If they aren't, Senator Austin had said, would you be back? If, does this cover it or is there more? And since I don't know what's going to happen in 27, those could be potential areas of vulnerability. But the 850, as you can see, covers the rest of the spend related to bringing on staff for second and third shift of tax, text and chat. That's what it costs to bring the remaining services up to speed. So if all stays equal, we wouldn't be back. But if we were not offered the opportunity of these two SAMSA grants, then we would have another gap.
Thank you.
Opioid settlement funds. So there were two DEMIS programs that were proposed to be funded through OSAC dollars. That's Mobile Crisis and some supportive supportive housing services. Table seven details the funding streams for Mobile Crisis. What is ending is highlighted in yellow. Those are the ARPA dollars. Goes down to 1.2 million in '26 and then ends on 11/30/25. So we are not funded through that funding stream in fiscal year 27. You can see the totals dropping down at the bottom also in yellow to 8.6 and 7.4. And so the proposal was to cover the 1.75 million in '26 and the 3 million in '27. And then supportive housing service, a similar scenario. So it gives you the total funding and then these ARPA dollars end on 12/31/25. So half a year funding in '26 and then none in '27, leaving the 562.5 and the 1.125 million gap in '27. Okay, and then table nine details the monies that have come in through the different settlements. So the settlements are listed with what has come in the door to date. It's $158 million at this point. And then 10 gives an overview of all the things that have been funded through the opioid settlement advisory committee. So things like the syringe exchange programs, the opioid treatment dispensing rooms and medication rooms at DOC, which have been extremely successful, the overdose rate in the criminal criminal justice system involved folks has has decreased tremendously, which is wonderful. A diversion program on the lock zone purchases and vending machines on the locks boxes, contingency management, which is a system whereby as people reach their recovery goals, there is an incentive to keep doing so. Mobile opioid treatment programs in two areas of the state. The Detera pouches, the induction of folks in emergency departments so that they can immediately get treatment connected to services. Our media buy, our harm reduction centers, supportive housing, harm reduction, Safe Spot overdose hotline expansion in Connecticut and some other prevention work on college campuses. And that totals $91 million. We also included, you had asked for a streamlined flow sheet of the settlement, how settlement dollars are allocated. Kelly, if you could scroll down to that. You have this in your packet. And so that details, you know, how suggestions come in through any of our public portals, either through the the actual public portal, through email, through detailing the core report. and then a collaboration between the referral subcommittee and ADPC. Um, and then we have subcommittees that are, provide checks and balances in terms of data and research, whether this is an allowable expense or not, the committee votes and then it has to go to OPM for approval, the AG for approval. And then we, if we have to do an RFP, we do an RFP and DEMIS is responsible for getting that money out the door. So that's a quick overview of that process. Um, and then we did provide you for your reading pleasure a list of um, allowable expenses or allowable uses, which is called Exhibit E. And so that details all the kinds of things that um, states and municipalities could potentially spend their, their opioid dollars on. And I think that's it, other than um, you asked for an update on any potential impacts uh, related to the transition at the federal level. And so far, things are business as usual. We, we are still drawing down our federal dollars. Certainly, if anything unusual happens, we would discuss with the governor's office and certainly um, with you all.
Any questions from the members? Well, Commissioner, you've really been very responsive and there, there are some documents I didn't get to read and I, I think some more may have arrived during your presentation. But uh, obviously, the anxiety, the biggest anxiety is about the uh, eight hundred eighty billion dollar projected cut to Medicaid in the, in the budget framework that was adopted in Washington. So um, it, it, it hovers over all of the other.
Yeah.
And, and it could affect whether we still get fifty percent. Uh, it could go down to, you know, I don't know what. Uh, and, and cuts to food and so forth, so that everything's connected.
Yeah.
And uh, so this is helpful and um, if there are any other questions, uh, why don't you get them to OFA? And um, if you think of something later. Uh, because we, there, there has been a lot of material presented this morning. And uh, if, if there's something, there are no dumb questions. And uh, so if you have any that you need clarity on, you can circle back um, to, uh, certainly to Sue Keane. Um, the committee's administrator and she can work with our nonpartisan staff to make sure that there's some kind of a response. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
So I think we are done right now, right?
We are.
Right. Well, that was, yeah, okay. Thank you. Bye. See you, see you.